Call to order the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garne.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Woodall. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Stan.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice We have nothing to report out of closed session. Public comment. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on matters on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not intended. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature, requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to three minutes. Thank you. Welcome.
Mayor Garne, council for the Riedel. My name is Richard Marx and I am a Regional Compliance Manager for the Construction Industry Force Account Council. We're a watchdog for public works jobs and we take into consideration public contract codes and make sure that agencies are abiding by the rules set forth by the state. And as far as locally, also an elected official, I am a harbor commissioner for Humboldt Bay Harbor Recreation and Conservation District, and I am also the president of the North Coast Rail Authority. So I do hold a few different hats. You do have my card available if you ever want any information. And there also on the back of that card, you'll see that we have a free app that is available for people to actually, if they have a question about a public works job and whether there is something done out of order, they can go ahead and, for free, just put information in there and it'll come back and bounce back to me and I can give somebody an answer.
Oh, nice.
And so I'm just here to introduce myself in that job because a lot of people don't know what the Construction Industry Force Account Council is. It's a nonprofit organization that has this service and does this service for California.
Lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming to introduce yourself.
Hi, Nick.
I even got my calendar out. Nick Angeloff, 156 Grayland Heights Road, mayor, council. The main thing going on, all-consuming thing for chamber is we'll have the, putting out the Christmas decorations on the weekend after Thanksgiving, so the 29th, 30th, 31st. Then we'll pick up any little stuff during the following week. And then on the 7th will be the Dennis Went memorial, or not memorial, Dennis Went tree lighting ceremony. And we're still planning on it for this year, at least at the chamber, although it's getting a little crowded. And the following year, we will probably request it to happen up here again because it's getting to be hundreds of people rather than near 100 people. So we'll get that going. Looks like we're asking HRC for the tree again this year. Shouldn't be any, not going to be any trees at Route 101, just give you a heads up. They couldn't donate a tree because their fires up in Oregon took out their Christmas tree source, so they don't have a time to get a new source. And I believe that's it. The rest of it's on the agenda. Is there any? Yeah, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome. Hello.
Hi, Jonathan Brodeur. So I'm not really sure how to go about this. I'm here because of my water bill that I just received. I own one house and with zero balance due previously, it is $244.23 using four units of water. So I don't know what the process is to go through this, but I'm very perturbed about this. And I've looked through the ordinance. Apparently, the ladies at the office said that it's written in there. It seems like a very vague interpretation. So what are we supposed to do about this? This is not right, really. Is there a process to go through to figure out what's going on?
Mayor Garne, members of the council. Staff would be happy to take a look at it and issue correspondence on it and make sure that the board is, or that the council is appraised of our assessment of the complaint. And if there needs further action, then we'll take it from there.
And so I would talk to you to deal with this, outside of this, is what's going on?
Yeah, if you want to. I prefer that the complaint was submitted in writing.
Oh, yeah, I've got a complaint form, yes.
Okay. And then from there, we can act on it.
Okay, all right.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to make a comment? Okay, then I will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. Is there any item? Does anyone want to remove the minutes from the consent calendar? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve.
Point of order for myself, I did not ask the public. So I will stop myself and ask the public, would anyone in the public like to remove the minutes from the consent calendar? Okay, having none, now I would ask for a motion, please. Do we have a motion?
Motion in a second.
And then we have a second. So we have a motion in a second. We will all vote now. And it's carry for one. Give it for zero.
He'll figure that out.
One more time, please.
Yep.
Motion carries for zero. Staff reports and communications.
Thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. The staff report begins on page six of your packet. We are expecting in the next couple of weeks for a, some small spot repairs on Bellevue Avenue to start. On that particular project, that's preparation for the ATP project coming up during the summer of 2020. We did get our ATP project bids back in, and we did get actually a good number of bidders on the project, and we got several good bids. So good prices. We were a little bit concerned since the grant application for the project was submitted back in 2015, and there's been changes in the economy and fuel prices since then that we might see bids that were significantly higher than those original projections. But I'm happy to say that we have some good results, and so we'll be back at the next council meeting for the approval of those packages. And that project is starting to come to fruition, so we're excited about that. The city did file a number of claims against PG&E and their bankruptcy proceedings. We did file a claim for the Rule 28 Utility Undergrounding Funds. We were advised by RCEA's attorney to go ahead and make those claims. We did have some reassurances from PG&E that that would not be an issue, but as a precaution, we did make a filing for those funds. And then there's about $2,600 in unpaid franchise fees from PG&E that falls into a window where it's possible that they might not pay for that amount, so we filed for that. And separately, we have agendas to update on the PSPS, so I won't go into that on this particular section. But we did have a fairly successful e-waste event back on October 12th, including taking in significantly more, almost 1,300 pounds more of e-waste. However, the out-of-city participation in Riedel's e-waste event is increasing. So we'll have some numbers later on for the council, later in the year, for the council in terms of how much we were able to receive versus the cost of that particular project. But I believe over the past two years running, the e-waste event has cost the city money. In the past, it used to actually generate revenue for the city. So it may be an item that in the future, we may consider canceling as the cost of that continues to increase. But with that, I will go ahead and turn it back to the council, see if there's any questions of staff or the city manager.
Just to comment on the e-waste, the Eel River Recology takes free e-waste. I think most of the, I'm not sure if they do in Eureka, but I know they do in Fortuna, so you can, people can take their e-waste there for free.
I have a question for the chief. Is there any, anything new on the homicide of Johnny Mac Renfro?
Guess that depends on what you describe as new. I don't remember the exact date. A week before last, we were able to obtain a Raimi arrest warrant, so there is a warrant in the system throughout California for the arrest of Demetrius Coleman for Mr. Renfro's murder. We are continuing to work, at this point in time, not so much on what occurred. We have a pretty good idea of what occurred, but on why it occurred, the motive for the shooting. Still continuing to serve multiple search warrants per week, mostly technology-related phone records, computer information, things like that. So we're still making progress, but spending a lot of time on it.
Anyone else?
Well, you said that some of the e-waste was out of town. Do we track where they come from? Do you know where?
I don't think they have any further delineation between in-town and out-of-town. And my guess is actually that they do it by zip code, and so actually, some of what would be registered as in-town is actually not within city limits.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to ask a question on the staff report? Having none, go ahead and move the staff reports and communications and move on to special call items. Special call item, number one, letter and council position related to Monument Road agreement with the county of Humboldt.
Thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. Earlier today, staff did attend the Board of Supervisors meeting. As the council may recall, the council authorized the mayor to sign the letter listed on page 11 of your packet, proposing a road rehabilitation agreement with the county of Humboldt regarding Monument Road and with the funding source of the proposed wind energy project. And so, of course, the council in the past has made it very clear that the city is opposed, that this council is opposed to the wind energy project for a variety of reasons. And the final EIR for that project has only been recently released, so staff of the city is continuing to review it. So we don't even, at this point, have a full review of that final EIR. However, the council did authorize the mayor to sign this proposed road rehabilitation agreement wherein the council proposes to sign a contractually binding agreement with the county of Humboldt to utilize proceeds from the wind energy project, if it proceeds, to repair Monument Road. So those of you familiar with Monument Road know that it's in particularly poor shape. It nearly failed back in 2017 during the February rainstorms. That project, we were lucky that it was declared federally a disaster. So FEMA funds were made available, and there's currently a repair that is expected to begin in the summer of 2020 for that stretch of the road. However, there are multiple other sections of the road that need to be repaired. So about 2,800 feet up to the initial plateau on Dinsmore have been identified. Some of that goes into the city limits, and much of that road was really constructed for logging equipment and, or really old, you know, cattle trails that have been sort of upgraded many, many years ago for the timber industry. Much of the roadway is deteriorating rapidly. It's hemmed in by wood poles and whatnot to hold the road in there, and those are currently in the process of failing. So the road really desperately needs attention. It's a liability, not just for the city, but it's a liability also for the county and for anybody who uses that road. So in the proposed letter, the city council has proposed to Supervisor Fennell that the first use of those funds should be to repair that road and that the city can enter into an agreement and contractually bind the county to fix the road. So Supervisor Fennell was gracious enough to bring this to the full board's attention today, and we did get a for-one vote in support of the letter and in support of the county doing additional research in order to determine if the project would even generate enough revenue to cover the cost of that particular project, which is going to be in the, you know, millions of dollars to adequately repair that road. And then also generally for public works to determine how much it would cost to repair the road. So those are some facts that the county needs to pursue, but I was pleased to see that really, actually across all of the board members, that there was a lot of support for the community, a lot of support for the proposal that the city council has put forward to the board. And it was nearly a unanimous vote. So we feel very good about that particular outcome, and we'll be waiting for the county to produce its analysis of it and for the board to take action on that. And certainly, we'll be updating the public and the council as we move forward in the process. So Mayor Garne was also there and able to make some comments, and I don't know if the mayor has any other additional things to add or if any of the other council members have anything to add.
I don't really have anything to add. It was, they were very supportive of the idea. It is going to come down, of course, to finances, which everything usually does, but they are going to do the assessment of it and they are going to do it in a, they seemingly committed to doing it in a timely manner. And so I was just appreciative as well that they, because one of the things that Supervisor Fennell said was that it was important to show the city, the constituents, the respect of the Board of Supervisors, that we ask them to look at this and that they actually look at it and make the assessment and do, you know, as much as they can in the moment, not knowing what's coming, what's coming for absolute certainty. So I did appreciate that they did that, and they were very supportive of the idea. Would anyone? Would anyone in the public have any questions regarding this? Go ahead.
Larry Arsenal, 378 Wildwood. And it's not directly on the road, but it's concerning the costs. I read your letter, very nice. I think that something is left out. This project is supposed to last, windmills have an average lifespan, I believe you said, of
Thirty.
Thirty years. At the end of 30 years, what happens if this, what happens if they need to be taken down? I think maybe we also should request some sort of deposit based on an objective review of what it might cost to deconstruct these windmills when their lifespan is over and have that as part of the cost required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are people looking at it any differently, especially in the county, since these blackouts? In other words, the blackouts make it very clear that we're turned off and we lose our power when somebody, somewhere else, community somewhere else have the problem, not us. Now, if this, if the power generated by these windmills are going out of the area, are we still going to be supplying power out of the area when we have no power ourselves?
I don't know that answer.
I can answer, I can answer some of that.
Okay, good.
And I am on, I am, just for your information, I am on RCA ward, and I've got a fair amount of experience with power generation. I used to manage the plant across the river for a couple of years. If the power, the way that they're going to take their power out is they're going to tie in, they're going to go across Humboldt-Redwood land, about 25 miles of open lines, poles, and they're going to tie into the grid in Bridgeville. And they're going to go, they're going to modify that substation, and that substation will link into the grid, the same grid that comes into Humboldt County is called Cottonwood Grid. It comes across 36 and it comes across 299. So we would be tying into the same one that would come into Humboldt County, and it's like, it's like a water pipe with electricity. You can't go two directions at one time. If you're either going in or you're coming out. So if they, if they put their power from that hill into that grid, it could only go as far as it was turned off. They're turning our power off to our local community farther east, farther than Bridgeville, because that's where their fire danger is, not Humboldt County in this side. And so if you were trying to send your power in that direction, you would run into the same open switch. The other side of it is, when the gentleman from PG&E was here at our meeting, we specifically asked him about would the windmills be able to supply power to Humboldt County, you know, come in? Like, we wouldn't, you wouldn't send it that direction. You'd open a switch and you'd bring it to the west. The, to my understanding, your windmill won't work without the grid because it's a kind of an energy source that's powered by wind. It doesn't have any, if the wind died down and you had, you were generating electricity, that would affect your, the power coming to you. Where when you have, when you have an electric grid up, you have that backing you up and you supplement it, just like you do in your houses that you have with your solar panels. And so it's really, from everything I can understand and what's been presented to us, for a standalone operation, the windmill is not a solution for our blackout in a short story. It'll basically benefit no one in a blackout, period. And I could be wrong, but that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. I hope you're right.
Does anyone else have a question or comment? Okay, then we will close this item because it was, was there a direction that you were wanting that?
No.
Item two, financial contribution to the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mayor Garne, members of the council. This item was on the last agenda. We didn't have a full council, so it got moved to this meeting. We also don't have a full council at this meeting, but certainly, the council can take action even if there's a member absent. So Councilmember Wilson had requested that the, and the council concurred that an item be placed on the agenda to discuss a verbal request for funding from the Chamber of Commerce for Christmas lighting, a mural, and other undefined items. In 2015, the city has provided $200 donation for Christmas decorations to the chamber. In 2017 and 18, the city had budgeted $1,500 annually for reimbursements to the Chamber of Commerce for holiday decorations. And again, in this current budget, the city council also has $1,500 for reimbursements for holiday decorations. So prior to 2015, the city did not provide these funds. So there are some restrictions in terms of the allowable uses for public funds, and the council would need to make a finding that these funds are, serve a public purpose. Beginning in 2017, we did request, or the, excuse me, the chamber did request additional commitments from the city for Christmas decorations. And so part of the requirement, because we go through an annual third-party audit, that we reimburse the chamber for those expenditures when we're provided a receipt. And so that'll stand up to an audit of the council. It was something that the council budgeted and supported. So for the current fiscal year, again, the council has budgeted $1,500 for decorations, and the chamber has, chamber president has made a request for some additional funds, I believe an additional $3,500. So it's up to the council. What we would do is, if the council wanted to do that, we can return with a budget adjustment, and then we would also need to really probably pursue a more formal agreement with the chamber in terms of spelling out what the allowable uses of the funds would be for reimbursement later on down the road. So with that, I don't know if Mr. Angeloff has any presentation or comments to make.
Mr. Angeloff, I'm the president of Chamber of Commerce now, 406 Wildwood Avenue. Basically, we have increased expenditures to get the light pole up and flush out the decorations this year. We can manage this however council pleases. I solicit for donations from the businesses year in, year out. If we need to get the funding for specific items such as the pole, we can cover the cost, offset it, use the donations for that, and flush out the Christmas decorations with the increased amount from the city council, we'll be fine with the chamber. The ownership of the pole seems to be somewhat of an issue of how to, if the city wants to take responsibility over the pole or if it remains with the creation's auto body or with the chamber or how that works out. I've spoken with Kevin. He's fine with having the pole on his property and taking the ownership of it. Electric company is, Spencer Electric is already in process on permitting and getting the project done. It's getting late in the game here, so I had to pull the trigger and take the risk. So however you guys want to work it, I will make it so, whatever's easiest for the city, which I imagine is a simple increase in decorations or cost for decorations, or donation for decorations or receipt decorations, however you want to term it. And then I can make it happen on our end for what we need to put those decorations up, as simple as that. So however you guys want to work it, it's fine with me. I'll make it so. We'll have our Christmas decorations, I promise you. So I think that's about it. Any? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor Garne. Nick, what is the, do you have an estimate from Spencer for the cost of the pole?
It'll be between $2,500 and $5,000, and that depends on what we find underground, how much underground utilities, et cetera. But, and he's giving us a break, is pretty much what's going to happen here. He'll be donating quite a bit of his time. He's a good guy. So Mark from Spencer Electric is a great guy, and he's contributing to the town, so.
So the, the main expense that we're looking for is to get the pole back up so we can have the decorations across Main Street?
Correct, and
And do it in a permitted way.
Doing it in a permitted way, doing it right. And we've got the Caltrans specs, and we're building it to Caltrans specs. We are now, at this point, basically waiting for the permit from the city, which was just submitted Monday or something. submitted Monday or something like that, and then the cage will come following that. So like I said, if it's easier, given that there's complexities with the public benefit of a pole that would be difficult to transfer over, back over to the city, if it remains in private hands, is it for public benefit? I think this is what the legal analysis is about.
Is it currently owned by, who owns the pole now?
Yes.
I'll jump in there. There may have been verbal conversations many years ago that the city would take ownership of the pole, some staff members may have made that commitment, I don't know that for a fact. It was never dedicated to the city, there's a whole process you have to go through in order to dedicate that kind of property to the city. So technically, right now, the poles are owned by whomever's property they sit on, so the liability of that belongs to the property owners. You probably won't see a staff recommendation to accept the dedication of these particular poles in this case, but...
You said Creations is willing to take that responsibility?
Yes.
And so the only thing left is the money that we need to change the, the amount that's authorized, which would mean a budget change, in order to cover the cost of the pole?
Effectively, yes. We would use separate funds for the pole because it would end up in private hands and the city can't pay for an object or anything, property that ends up in private hands, so. They can't make a direct one-to-one on that. So the chamber will cover those costs and will submit to receipts for you for the balance of the $3,500 to $5,000 would be wonderful. And we have the means to do so at this point, so.
But the balance, then, that you said you would receipt us for, that would still be for the pole?
No.
So, I mean, we're having this conversation, we're going back and forth with however it works for us, but, but the reality is, we need to know, really, are we paying for the pole or not? Because if we're paying for the pole around the block, then that's just as wrong as paying for the pole directly.
No. That's not how this will work out. You will receive receipts for Christmas decorations, period. For the amount of money that you choose to give the chamber.
And they will be spent on Christmas decorations?
And they will be spent on Christmas decorations, no doubt about it.
And so, I'm sorry, Sid, yeah, go ahead.
I do have a question. So I thought the pole was on this side of the road?
No, it's on the opposite side of the sidewalk.
It's on the opposite side, and then they're going to move it down?
No, we're not going to move it anywhere, it's going exactly where it was.
So it's already on his property?
Yes.
Okay.
Always has been.
It wasn't put in the ground, right?
And it has to be a light pole? You can't just put a pole in that we could just put a pole in and hook Christmas decorations to?
We could do that, and that's actually one of the options I'm considering, is putting the pole up without the arm on it. So, that would work for Christmas decorations, yes, so. But the pole already has a light on it, so that's really up to Kevin at that point, whether or not he wants that light in front of his business, right? So.
So if I understand this right, the, the city would be increasing its donations, you're going to buy ex, we've already budgeted to buy $1,500 worth of Christmas decorations.
Correct.
And the chamber is going to buy $2,000 worth of Christmas decorations.
Sure, yeah.
And so we're going to, what I hear saying is that we're going to, we're going to buy an additional $2,000 worth of Christmas decorations, and then the chamber is going to pay for a pole?
Yes. And it's not quite that simple, but yes, we'll pay for the pole. Typically, I would go around and ask for, solicit for donations for Christmas decorations, I will solicit for donations for the light pole. So it'd be very clear and...
Is this doable, Mr. Mayor?
I think when we bring, we would bring back a resolution to the council authorizing the funds to be used as a reimbursement for the pole, where the council would deem that to be a public benefit for, for the general public, and then that would be an authorized reimbursement for, for the pole. So, but that would have to be, you would have to provide, you know, specific invoices, receipts for, for that, you know, construction activity, just as you would for the, for the Christmas decorations. I think part of the, part of the problem for staff and for any audit would be that, you know, a pole, a construction of a, of a kind of a fixed asset essentially, is, doesn't really fall under that category of decoration. It's an instrument to decorate, but it's not the decorations themselves.
I guess all I'm concerned is, I get the principle, and I think the people in this room get the principle, we'll find out in public comment, but the way things go today, we just, as long as we're covered and we've done this proper, I'm good with it as long as we've done it correctly, I don't speak for the rest of council, if it's legal. I think it's a good, I think it's a good part of the Christmas thing, it made a big, it was a really nice addition until it went awry, to have that set up there with the deer and the, and everything going across, it was really neat.
And it's bigger this year?
It adds to our, our city.
And we'll certainly, if that's the council's direction, we'd certainly, will engage the city attorney prior to taking action, as we do with the other items that come to the council.
I would just like to say that I do agree that they, they look beautiful when they're up. I think a pole is sufficient without the light, the less cost, and that the $1,500, we've already supplied all the decorations. So our original $1,500 that is already budgeted should be going to this pole, and that's my feeling.
Pardon?
I think it's a great asset to the city to have the light pole up and have the decorations across the street. It, you know, it just makes it a much more festive Christmas experience. And I'd like to help the chamber to that end. I think it's, you know, whether, what dollar amount, you know, I think we need to flush out tonight, but I think, you know, I think, I think we need to help the chamber get that pole back up.
And, well, I, I think it's unfortunate that we tied the pole and the decorations together, is what I really think, that, that they're two separate issues. Yes, that's where you would hang it from, but as, you know, Councilmember Strawn said, you just actually need a pole. And so I, I feel unfortunate that those two things were together. What I like to know, I guess, is, well, let's start out with last year's decorations that we donated for. Has electricity been ensured that they're going to work at all of them now? Are they, have, because basically, if we look at last year's decorations and we say, okay, we're going to give another $1,500 this year, but we look at last year's, and last year's were suboptimal, let's say. I mean, there was, part of the businesses didn't have electricity to the stars, so the stars weren't lit. Some of the stars, there were, you know, extension cords going down and across, which is quasi-safety issue. So, I mean, I'm all for decorations, I'm all for lights, and, but also, we have to answer to more than just the five of us, we have to answer to everybody. And so we have to ensure that there's something besides the idea of decorations, you know? And so that's really what I'm most concerned about, is that, like, if last year's decorations are going to go up again this year, are they going to work better than they did last year? Because if they didn't, then maybe that's where the money should go, to running electricity to the stars that we've already purchased, you know, that the chamber already purchased, but to make the things work the way they're supposed to work. Is that something that, do you know if that's been kind of...
We sorted out, that last year was the first year we did the stars, I believe.
Right, it was.
And we sorted out a bunch of issues. By the end of it, all the stars were lit. Now, and we also picked up the cords and put them over the top of the sidewalk. We'll have to continue that this year, but if we do receive increased funding, I would love to put some electricity to all those poles. And I'm in conversations with Spencer about that now, but it's, that's, that's going to be a pretty big expense, you're talking about having to run electric for each business.
And I didn't mean the chamber themselves.
Yeah.
I didn't mean, I did not mean, is the chamber going to make that happen? I mean to say, have the businesses been, you know, contacted and, has it been worked out, is basically?
Yeah, we got, I've been talking to the businesses over the year, and we got most of everything sorted out. There's no more, going to be no more issues with cords being down low, at least. One of the stars needs to be raised up. And the Community Resource Center, which is the base, the main issue last year, will have that cord, as it ended up last year, coming up and down into the side of their building. So I think we resolved most of those issues last year. And as we move forward, I can, yes, address those issues of permanently electrifying the standards that these things are on, to make it a more suitable process. It's going to be a lot easier this year, I can tell you that.
Nice.
A lot quicker, a lot easier.
And so are there more, so the decorations that are going this year, are they, I mean, have they been chosen already? Have, have, you know, have you gone out and said, okay, this is what we're going to do?
Four more reindeer that will be coming up, and the extension to the star and, or wreath and reindeer that come across the road, or go all the way out to the edge of the sidewalks now. So we had it last year, but we didn't have an opportunity to put it up for obvious reasons.
Right, right.
So those are the two things that'll happen this year. What I do is I wait with this money, and I wait till after Christmas is over, and I purchase new ornaments at the beginning of the year, because they go on sale by 33%.
Right.
So, and these things are supposed to last decades, and they have been so far. And that's it, yeah. It'll get more professional year on year, as we move forward and work out the kinks. No, no huge promises with it being perfect at this point.
Nobody needs perfect.
But it'll be as close as we can get, at least. And I'll try to minimize any, well, I will, there will be no hazards, at all. I've also got a bunch of gaffers tape, so that'll take care of a lot of it.
Awesome. Does anyone in the public have a question?
I seem to recall there was mention of getting the bridge lit up. Since Caltrans has shut us down, are we going to get the bridge lit up?
Next year, we'll go for that one. This year, I don't think we're quite ready, and that's actually part of the, we'll be, we're on schedule for a five-year plan to get the bridge lit. This year, it was just too much focus on the pole and getting that back up, so we weren't able to get to a point where we could get to Caltrans to like that, make it actually work out correctly. This decoration money will likely be used for lights to light up the bridge as, well, we'll see, to some degree. Depending on, I'll talk with staff about whether or not that's within city limits and should be used for that, or if I can find money for, extra for, for those, so.
Okay, back to anyone else? No? Okay, well, bring it back to the council. Anything else, any deliberation? Is there a number? Is there a number anyone wants to work out?
Yeah, I'd like to, what is it, the number you're actually asking for in the, is it, was it an additional $3,500 or $3,500 total? What was actually being asked for in the staff report?
Originally, I asked for an extra $3,500 because the costs could get up to $5,000, so. But whatever the council pleases, we would be satisfied certainly with $3,500, absolutely.
Thank you.
Additional?
I, I...
I've not still got the answer.
No, oh, no, he, initially, he was additional, but he would be satisfied with...
The total is $3,500. I'd make a motion that we authorize $3,500 total.
Total?
Total.
Second?
You have a motion and a second? Do you have a vote? I'm still thinking. I'm thinking, okay. No, I was still thinking. I was still thinking. I was still making my decision of what I thought.
And Mayor Garance, just for clarification, the council just gave staff direction, so we'll go ahead and draft some documents, and then we'll be back at the next council meeting. That will be the opportunity for actual official vote on the item.
So the motion passes 4-0. Next item, staff direction on the proposed dog park in Riedel. City manager. Are those copies for the public?
Yeah, for the public, if anybody wants to grab them. So what I just passed out is just a complete total concept for a dog park location. If we were to move forward with a dog park, the end result will not look anything like this, but it's just a way to, you know, have a conversation with a, with a visual. So the petition was circulated in the community by Renata Loflin for promoting the idea of a dog park. And so that was submitted to the council, I believe, back on the October 1st meeting. And then October 15th, Councilmember Wilson, and the council concurred to have this item placed on the agenda for a discussion of the possibility. So after following the submission of the, of the petition, to the city council, staff did meet, had a couple of conversations over potential dog park options. It was really just a very cursory conversation. And one of the potential options that we had discussed several years ago in the past was a lot on Ireland Street, Ireland and Painter, near Center Street. So you may, you know, that lot is adjacent to the freeway, and we got the projector and everything ready, and now, and we're not ready to use it. But so hopefully, everybody can imagine and remember exactly where this parcel is. But if you were driving from Wildwood Avenue, from the school, past the school on your right, you'd come to Ireland Street, and right off to your left, in front of you, would be the freeway in this kind of vacant parcel of land that the city mows and maintains. And that's pretty much all it's used for at this point in time, is just kind of open space. We did double-check, because initially, I think, staff a couple of years ago had done this assessment, and had come to the conclusion that was, the parcel was owned by Caltrans. We've since had the community development director review that, and it is a city parcel, city-owned parcel, that, you know, sort of a leftover of the installation of the freeway. So one of the concepts, and this is certainly just one of, you know, potentially several concepts, it would be the placement of a dog park facility at this location. The city does not own very many parcels, as the council's well aware. What we do own is usually owned by the water system, so it's not really, can't be used for parks unless we purchase it from the water system. However, this is owned by the city, and so it's a conceptual idea, and the park, dog park probably would not be terribly expensive. We do believe that there's access to grant funds to potentially pay for a park. One of the ideas with the, the concept here is that it's also an opportunity to install a sidewalk on Ireland Street, adjacent to the, to the, to the dog park. Install lighting for Ireland Street and also for the dog park, potentially some trees and whatnot, and then utilize the city's right-of-way on the east side of Center Street to install a parking lot. a parking lot. So, from an efficiency standpoint, it seemed like one of the better locations. There are potentially other options. Davis Street Park, which is owned by the school district. We could apply for a grant to purchase property for the installation of a dog park. Part of City Hall, the grounds of City Hall could be fenced in and used for a dog park. So, there's a, a number of different ideas and options. This is just an initial starting point for the discussion.
Thank you. Would anyone in the council like to speak to this?
What happened to the skate park? Didn't we have people up here before talking about a skate park with the students and...
A few years ago, we did have a few folks interested in, in a, in a skate park. That hasn't been agendized for the discussion, but there has been interest in the past.
Is, just for my clarification, this is on the riverside of the freeway?
No, it's, it's on the west side of the freeway. So, again, if you're driving down Center Street and the school's on your right, you'd come to the four, to the three-way stop and across the street just to the left would be this vacant parcel.
There's a mobile home park right there, so...
Yeah.
So, Foster's, Foster's old park there.
There was a park there?
There's a trailer park there.
A trailer park, okay.
Is, is this map correct?
Yes.
Sure looks like this is on the east side of the freeway.
On the west side of it.
If you're looking at it, it's, it's a north-south view. The freeway you can see on the right. And then, the, including on the southbound lane, you'll see the three lanes, the turning lane that would go into Davis Street. So, the southbound lane has, has three lanes. And then that's the vacant parcel. It's just a really small sliver of, of land, not really large enough to do a whole lot, but about the right size for a dog park.
Is it kinda steep going down?
It is a little bit, yeah.
Yes.
We're up to speed. And people use it like to cut across it. There's a path, there's a footpath from where the cage of the highway ends, if you're walking on, on Painter. Yeah, Painter. And it, and people just kinda cut that to go over, like to Center, cut, to go down Ireland.
Oh, the kids, yeah. The kids, when they walk to school.
Exactly, yeah.
And where did you, where was parking? Where, where do you...
So, there's, the, the, that Center Street used to obviously go across the freeway and then they installed the freeway and removed several blocks of town, including the streets. And so, Center Street, which actually extends over towards where the Danco Project is currently, I mean, that's east Center Street. There is a small sliver there of city right-of-way where you could install a parking lot without impacting the, the resident who also uses that right-of-way.
On the other side of the bridge?
No, on the same side of the...
Same, on this side.
On the same side, but across the street.
It's on the west side of the freeway, but across the street from Ireland.
Yeah, so those would be the parking spots. And you can see the...
And you go on the double gate, there'd be a double gate and then you have the gate. So, it's right, it'll be right at the...
It's right next to it? So, where's the, where's Foster's trailer park?
Right here. Like, here's the, here's the Center Street, so that's that one mid-lot there. Has little chain of friends around it.
So, you're gonna park in Foster's that's already there? That little turnaround that's there?
Yeah. Yeah, it's like a little dead-end turnaround.
Well, I am, I'm excited about it because I'm a dog person and I want a dog park in Riedel.
I'm excited about it because I'm a dog person and I like, I wanna park in Riedel. And so, I'm all forward, for, for it. So, now we will open it up to public. Oh, I'm sorry.
I had originally asked to have this on here, 'cause someone, they did a petition and I, we hadn't seen the petition. I just, I wanted to know what the petition was about and, and give, I guess, the due for the people that put in that effort to go get a petition that we would at least respond to. I'm not, I don't have a dog, I'm not opposed to it. I'm, you know, concerned about the cost. But since we started this conversation, the city manager found this piece of land, which seems a whole lot economic, more economical than some of the ideas that were floated around. And so, I really don't see a, a big problem with it. I think it's, it's, I know the community wants a dog park. It'd be, it would be great to, the people doing the petition said that there would be a lot of volunteers, but that's always something that, you know, it just, is this something that the, the staff is gonna have time to be able to maintain this?
Yeah, I, I, I think we can, I think we can make this work. You know, part of this, part of having a dog park is also related to public safety in the sense that you would have a, a location designated for dog owners to come and walk their dogs. Part of the conversation we had over the summer was people walking their dogs and, and letting, and having the dogs relieve themselves on the Little League's playing field surface. And they were very upset about that. So, there were some signs placed to, you know, restrict dog use of the, of the softball fields. And so, if there was a designated location for dogs, you're able to kind of help make sure that, you know, people understand that there are alternatives to taking their dogs to a public park to do their business on grounds that are really not for that. And it provides an area for congregation for the dog owners to provide information about licensing, you know, shots, that sort of thing, and provide an alternative for people who are out maybe walking dogs that we wanna try to corral into a, into, into a dog park type situation. So, I think overall, it, there's multiple benefits that serve public safety, serve recreational assets, and I think the dog park may be able, there may be some design features that could be included in the dog park that help minimize the amount of ongoing maintenance for the facility.
And, you know, there's a somewhat of a problem walking dogs in Riedel because of loose dog issues. And so, it would be lovely to have a place that you can take your dog, take it, your dog off leash and let your dog run around and play without worrying that when you're walking your dog for exercise, it's gonna be another dog that's gonna be an issue. So, that's also, and that's a safety issue as well. And people also, when they, at least dog people that I know, they look up dog parks in other towns when they're going somewhere out of town. You look to see if there's a dog park nearby. And that is actually a reason some people stop in certain places because there's a dog park. So, I, I think that it would be beneficial in a lot of ways to the city. Would anyone, did we already do, I do public comment, I don't think I did.
Go ahead.
Anyone in the public?
Very good. This is, this is located on Ireland?
Correct.
Is this parcel, not the parking, I know, I know where the parking is. It's, the, the parking is to the left-hand side of Foster's trailer park? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I know that where that is, okay. Is this triangular in shape?
I think it is, mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wanna make a clear, make that to what you're talking about. There's a house in front of that on...
Center and Ireland.
I'm with what he said.
What'd he say?
Who's gonna maintain it? You're gonna have the city workers, which is a liability to the city, to do it. And because, I mean, buddy, I watched it, walks a dog, they'll walk by and let them stop and do their business all over town. And if you pick up after your animals, they're for good. But there's too many people, ninety-five percent of them, that don't. They just think, well, it's a natural thing. And they get irritated when you say something about it because they're not gonna grab them paper bags to pick up because they think it's, oh, yucky. But yet, they'll let them do it. And they get mad if you take them, the animals by their house and let them go in their yard to do their business. But yet, they let them out here.
Thank you. I would say there's a, there's, you know, a slight chance that those aren't gonna be the people using the dog park, but you never know. I would, I can say that I've been in a lot of dog parks and the people who are going to the dog park, generally, taking their pups to the dog park, generally pick up. I, I can't remember like more than maybe once or twice that I have ever had, seen like poop all over a dog park because that's just a part of the deal. And usually, people who go to the dog park understand that. But you never know. Is there a motion to have the, would anyone else in public like to make the comment? I'll bring it back.
Well, I, again, am gonna bring the skate park back up because there was also a committee who brought skate park here and I don't know why a dog park would take preference over a skate park. I think it's something we should discuss and that the community should have a say in what they would like. Because we definitely had interest before in a skate park. So, if we have the land, if we have the opportunity. And another issue is the maintenance. We already have the Little League field down there, which those animals are normally just let out. They're nor, on a leash. Those people who live down there just let the dog out and it goes and poos. But the maintenance of those, we've had a little issue with the city keeping those up and now we wanna add another park with another maintenance issue, so those are just things to consider.
They already maintain that. I mean, the city already maintains that, isn't that what you said?
Well, they're supposed to, but I do know that there have been private people who've had to go down there and mow that lawn because it hasn't been ready for the kids when it's time for them to play Little League. I know that for a fact, Karen.
Well...
But this, this, I was just asking, this was something that the city already made. This is not the ballpark.
It's only the city's responsibility when they have available staffing and funds to do it. It's not really a hundred percent responsibility of the city. It's kind of a joint use agreement as funds are available.
Yeah, and I, I would just add to, add to that, we're kind of off on the Brown Act issue. So, the agenda is really specific to the dog park action.
So, is there, or is there not a motion? I will make a motion. If there isn't, I'll make a motion to ask the staff to pursue the idea and just to...
Are they going to, in that motion, are they gonna come back with a price to us and tell us what, what this all entails, or is it just...
I would hope so. I would hope that it would be a full plan.
I think we would, what staff would do is, is take a, kind of a deeper look at this. This is just all very preliminary, more of a fifteen-minute conversation.
Right.
And a proposal for a potential idea. This, if the council directs us to further pursue, it would be a little bit more of an investment of staff resources to try to come up with some options for a potential dog park.
I would also like to know what Fortuna's history has been in a half a dozen years or so that they've had the dog park. You know, what, what added costs have they faced? You know, do the, do the users generally do a good job of maintenance or a sloppy job of maintenance? And how much burden is placed upon the city then?
Of course, I haven't heard a second, so it might just be a fail. We're just chatting, just chatting. We need to move on. We can move on.
Well, is it, does the council want, doesn't wanna give you the direction to do that?
Well, no, I made a motion because no one made a motion. So, I made a motion to ask the staff to pursue the idea of the plan and come back to us, but there was no second and so...
Well, I was, I was trying to get clarification of what...
Oh, okay, yeah. And that, and I was saying, yes, I think that was including the whole plan.
I was providing more clarification. I, I will second that in a, in investigative type. Let's get a plan.
Do we have a motion and a second? We have a vote, please? Motion carries three one. Councilmember Strawn dissenting. And now, discussion on the recent PSPS and options moving forward to better prepare the city and the community.
So, Mayor Garne, members of the council, just quickly debrief on the more recent PSPS event. Overall, similar to the, to our first event, you know, the staff did, did great in responding to the event. We had, we were, on the public, public work side, we were significantly more prepared for the event. Of course, we had a much longer lead time and, and there was also the event from back in earlier October to kind of work through some of the kinks. Back at the first event, we kind of realized that there were some limitations in our fuel storage. So, we were able to increase fuel storage by about thirty-three percent and get a little bit over seventy-two hours' worth of fuel for the generator. So, we purchased additional fuel transfer devices to increase the amount of fuel available for the generators. So, the, independent of any fuel deliveries, we, we would have been able to go on for seventy-two hours. The event lasted nowhere near seventy-two hours, so we were very lucky because some of our neighbors to the south were in a PSPS event for five days. So, that would be obviously a real major problem. But certainly, even a full day worth of, of power outage is extremely inconvenient, especially given the, really, the lack of clarity from Pacific Gas and Electric. So, we were able to listen in on the OES calls directly with, with County OES and PG&E. So, I do have a lot of good things to say about County OES and they did the best job that they could to relay the information that they were giving to them. And I would say that, you know, if there was any frustration or disappointment with those communications from County OES, I would definitely say it was, you know, owned really by Pacific Gas and Electric for providing inaccurate or untimely information. And we were able to report into the, to the county. The county also stepped up their game in terms of having regular phone conversations with the cities. And I believe for the most part that there were no significant impacts to the other cities and we were able to report none on our end. So, we were in good, a good position there with the event and I'm, I'm very pleased with staff's response to the, to the event. What else? We did apply either the, following the, within the first two days of the, of the event, CalOES did supply a grant application for, for emergency funding for, for supplies. The staff did submit an application for three generators, stations, two for the lift stations. They currently do have generators, but they are a little dated and as the council may recall during the first event, one of them failed. And within the first few hours of the power outage, we were able to secure a rental generator. So, it was not, did not diminish the capacity of the wastewater system to handle the situation. And we also placed, so there's two lift stations that need new generators, updated fuel supplies. We wanna move from petroleum over to natural gas, propane, and then also City Hall. So, so we put in those applications as well as a request for funding for a mobile charging station essentially, and warming station, basically a tent, outdoor tent, that would have a generator so people could come and charge here locally. They did, PG&E did have a, a station up in Fortuna eventually. They did, PG&E did have a, a station up in Fortuna eventually. Didn't quite start when they said it was going to start, but eventually they did get it operating. And so, so the idea is for something similar to that on a smaller scale. And so we'll expect to hear back from Cal OES as to whether the, that the city will receive that funding. There was only about $10 million available statewide though, which is not a whole lot, but we'll follow that. I don't know if Chief Connor has any update on public safety during the outage and whether there was an increase in crime?
We didn't notice any significant addition in crime. There was a report on Facebook that from the generator that happened on Second Avenue. That, that actually took place when power was on. Between the power shut off and then you could go second shut off, this didn't happen. To my knowledge, that is the only shut off crime that was committed. Generator was outside chained into the building and the thief came by and not only the chain secured it, but the extension cord that ran into the house was kind of nasty. Police department did a little bit better. We were better prepared, as the city manager mentioned. Had more lead time. Were able to plug our server, the switch and one computer into the generator provided by 2KW generator right about Public Works. So we were able to type to some degree. It's rather inconvenient though because the generator needs to be outside. When you leave the station, you don't want to leave it sitting outside with nobody there. So it ran for a while, but it was shut down for quite a while too, so we kept it under control. So I have on the power shut off.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. As part of the grant request to OES, Kyle, did, did we get an estimate of the value of the three generators and tents and other?
We really don't have a detailed estimate. So we, and the grant application is one of the shortest I've ever seen. So our estimate was roughly $25,000 per unit. The total grant application was for right around $91,000. So I think it's, you know, unlikely that we would receive the full amount anyways. So, but any, any funding would be helpful. The other context I think that the council should consider, I realize that there, you know, we very much want to solve this problem and pursue all avenues. However, one of the things that we'll be trying to confirm with PG&E and the county is that the county grid may also be more prepared the next time, certainly hopefully by this time next year. In that there is a, a very sizable power plant in King Salmon that theoretically can power most, if not all, of the county. And so that was not utilized during these events. And it's just seems hard to believe that there would be any reason why Pacific Gas and Electric would not be interested in making sure that was connected the next time so that they don't have to hear the county of Humboldt complain over the OES phone calls because county OES was very vocal on behalf of the citizens of Humboldt County. So I, I'm not sure necessarily that for PSPS events, that they're going to necessarily this time next year be as bad as they, as this current month of October, the last month of October has been. But it certainly has exposed some, you know, general issues with power in the city and making sure that, that all the facilities operate, whether it's in a PSPS event or in an earthquake, which is, you know, very likely, or really a certainty at some point, just a question of when. And so certainly there needs to be some work done on our backup energy supplies. And I would just add to that, the city's actually in a much better, over the past six or seven years, the city's in a vastly improved position to be able to handle the power outage. So there was a, a brand-new wastewater treatment plant that was installed down at the corporation yard that the state of California required that the city install. That included a very large generator. I don't know the exact size of it, but it powers the entire facility with some energy to spare. So that was an improvement. The council may also recall as part of our water source diversification and the Metropolitan Wells project, we paid a nickel on the dollar for a brand-new mobile 125K generator. That was also used during the, the crisis. It's also a brand-new generator and SIPs fuel. So it's very fuel efficient and that was deployed in the field also during this event. So if those two things hadn't been there, I think we would be actually really, you know, possibly one of the least prepared cities on the North Coast for, for this event. But because we have those facilities, we made those investments into, into those facilities, we were able to not have any embarrassing wastewater overflows into the river and have that in the paper. And the fundamentals of the city water and wastewater were covered. So, so I think that should be remembered in this, in this unfortunate situation.
Kyle, where, where did you use the generator at?
So the, over at the Wells site. So the, the generator, part of, we did receive USDA funding as part of the grant mix for that. And we're really not allowed to use that generator for anything other than water unless it's a declared emergency. So we did not have a declared emergency, so we can't really wheel that thing over to various facilities unless it's a declared, you know...
Who declared it?
Emergency.
The state?
The county council or, yeah.
The council couldn't declare that?
Yeah.
And how did the city, were you got, were you able to run computers and stuff here? Is that stuff all hooked up yet or?
Uh, no, I believe the, we had a generator and made sure that the police department was prioritized for the use of it. But part of the problem is that we have a lot of sensitive electronic equipment and servers here. So it's a little bit ill-advised to maybe hook up a, a smaller generator to these systems because we don't want to create a bigger, you know, damage a piece of equipment. But we were able to, you know, the City Hall did function as a basic EOC. We had copper landlines and we were able to communicate using those. We still had cellular service and then the police department did have a generator. So functionally it worked. The core, core services did work.
Okay.
I don't know, I was going to bring this up at council time where we do our council reports, but this might fit in here at this time is, on the 24th was our monthly RCEA meeting. And one of the items that was brought on to, was brought up by Chair Winkler was, I won't read the whole thing, but basically it, he is explaining that RCA is who has got some commitments as far as being a responsible agency. And it's a joint powers. It has all the cities and it has a member of the county. Fennel is on there. And part of their goals are to actually make this place self-sufficient by the year 2025, which is a very aggressive program. And so in this, along with a letter similar to what Rex Bones and the Sheriff Hansel wrote to the governor saying, or actually the PG&E saying, and in the wording was, "We know that this plant can, is technically capable of handling the county." The plant is 163-megawatt plant. The air quality permit, that's the current permit as of this moment, states in that that one of the scenarios of operation is that that plant would support the county, the northern region for years in the event of a, any of these things, power grid gone, you know, these different things go down and emergencies. There is, says that we don't anticipate it at that time when they wrote the permit. So in that course of discussion, it was brought up that we create an ad hoc committee through RCEA, which allows us to have four members for Brown Act purposes to coordinate island, to island Humboldt County by this time next year, by September of next year. And so in that, and I am on that subcommittee. Chair Winkler is, Stowe, Fennel is, and Dwight Miller from Trinidad. And so that's something that we're going to work with as a RCA. We believe that we have enough clout as RCA. All of you, unless you opted out, get your, your electricity from, it's delivered to you by PG&E, but it is sold to you by RCA. And they, they do in excess of $50 million a year in energy sales for the county of Humboldt. And so the, the idea is to find whatever is, whatever it is that isn't allowing that power plant to produce the, to supply the 163 megawatts that is, it is air permitted to do that at 100% load 24 hours a day on gas. It's on, runs on natural gas. It's, that's what it's designed to do. And so our goal as a, as a committee is to get to the bottom of that and then work with, with PG&E and the county. And, and the entity has enough resources. It, I mean, they deal with the PUC, Casio, all of these, and they have consultants that are behind us that are a whole lot smarter than any of us that, that are in this power industry because they have to to do what RCA is carrying out. So it's mature, it's, it's premature to do everything that we want to see happen. And it doesn't rule out that there could be another event before the year's over in the way the weather's going. But there is an intent to get something done locally and not just me, it's, it's, it's everybody. Supervisors are in on it. Everyone is, is up to wanting to do this. And so stay tuned for further developments. It's, I think it's, I think it's a viable, and I, and I'll give you my own firm commitment that if you know how I get wound up on a couple of things now and then, this is one I'm wound up on. I think they're pulling our leg. The, the, the facility was built to take care of this county. And it's got some, it's got 10 engines that are about the size of this, but probably, you could probably put two of them in this room. I mean, they're V18, V18 engines that are twice as tall as I am and at least this wide. And on each one of those engines, there's a 16-megawatt turbine attached to it. And then they're all, they're all connected to the grid or together. So it's there.
Is it producing power now?
Pardon me?
Is it producing power?
It produ, it runs, if you drive by, when you drive by King Salmon and you look off to where the old power plant was, there's 10 big stacks, smoke stacks that sit there. And if you look at those real close, you'll see two or three of them will be generating heat. So they're running all the time. And what they, they use them now is, that's what we've got to get a straight answer to is what they're doing. They use them to kind of supplement a load. So they're there as a cushion if, if your load spikes. If, if this power plant down here in Humboldt...
You're starting to walk...
Pardon me? If, if your, if your power plant in Scotia were to go offline at any, just in the middle of the day, and they're, and they're exporting 20 megawatts out of their plant or 15 megawatts, and that suddenly disappears, the county comes up short 15 megawatts in a instant. Just as, just like snapping your fingers, how fast it'll disappear. So they have those turbines running now that'll pick up and, and throw that load into your, into your grid. Now, why they couldn't do that without the grid is a question, but it's also in their quality permit that says they can. That's what it was designed to do.
Okay. We're back with that. Okay. Okay. Well, we were starting to venture off into electric lessons and that was not actually what we're supposed to be doing. So I wanted to kind of get back on track and just, one of my questions was about the community resource center and if there's a way. And I don't know, you know, you put in an application for it, so we'll wait to see how that comes out. But I would like to say to the council, just from my perspective, that if that's something that doesn't come through on the grant process, that I think that it is something that the council needs to reach into their funds and figure out a way to do. Because having, Real Del citizens having to drive to Fortuna to charge up, well, now you're using gas to go to Fortuna. If we can do something, even if it's on a smaller, definitely probably be on a smaller scale, but on some scale, that I would like, in, in future, after we find out about the grant, whether or not it's, we receive it. If we don't, I would like to bring it back and have that conversation.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Kyle, when is the award of the OES grants going to be announced?
They have not provided that information, so it's really kind of on the fly. They did extend, I want to say, the grant application period is extended to either the 12th or the 14th. We actually submitted within the first 24 hours that, that the grant was available. But I'm not, I want to say it was the 14th. It was extended to the 14th.
Would our action to pass a budget resolution and provide funding for the $90,000 or whatever it is of materials that we need, would that preclude us getting a grant award?
I would not advise doing that at this point in time. They did ask specifically if there were, you know, funds set aside in the county or in the city for disaster, for disaster response. And, and the answer is no. So if we did a budget adjustment now, we'd have to respond, yes, there is. And then I think they just deduct that out of, out of the total grant award. So we'll see, we'll see what ends up happening, you know, when it comes to the grants in the state. You know, there's a saying, beggars can't be choosers. And so, so they kind of dictate all of the terms. So you may recall with the grant application for the, the equity funding that they then withdrew and then changed the requirements that made it, you know, difficult for the city to make application for that funding. So it's really up to the state and up to OES to, you know, provide something that the city can access.
Thank you.
I would, I agree with Councilman Wilson that, you know, this might happen again before any of the funding comes through. And we have that generator across the river and if it can only be used for emergency, I think we should come to a consensus on this council that we can use that if something happens to the water on this side or to the wastewater on this side and we need that backup generator. That's why we purchased it.
So again, the, the funding for that was actually purchased using grant funding. So when you sign the grant agreements, you have to adhere to the, to the grant agreements. In a, in a, in an emergency, we can use it for, for different purposes, but in all reality, but probably the highest purpose and use for a 125-watt generator is water supply, whether that's for firefighting or for general water supplies. We would actually shut down wastewater before we would ever shut down water. So in certain cases, that's going to be, that size generator is going to be significantly more than you need to use. So, you know, I don't think it's really something that the council needs to set a policy that every time there's a PSPS event, we're going to declare an emergency and have the generator over at City Hall. I think it would be wise to leave that up to, up to staff. And if we need to bring it over to a different location, we would certainly be bringing that to the council.
Don't you already have one for City Hall? Didn't we already authorize that to be pursued for a backup generator for, is that separate than the $90,000?
Correct. No, that's, that's included in a...
But that's something we're, we're already pursuing.
Correct.
So as far as a resource center, whether that's up in this parking lot or, or we work out something in conjunction with the fire hall, to where you're able to do, and those can be smaller generator, that does something to charge, you know, people's medical supplies, cell phones, just, just some of the more, more basic stuff for people that don't... just some of the more, more basic stuff for people that don't have those resources. And the medical supply side is one that's, it's a, it's a big deal. You can charge one of those in hours. And the people have CPAPs as one of the, as one of the items that is, we have them ourselves, but I talked to, I've talked to dozens of people that have these CPAP machines. And they're for breathing. If you have a problem, if you don't know what they are, they're for breathing at night. You sleep with a little mask and it pushes air down your throat. And those can be purchased, like we got a little battery pack thing. And you can charge that thing up and it'll last you for a night or two nights, depending on your, how long you sleep and what your CPAP is. But a lot of, and a lot of older people have these. And so, that they don't, they can't afford generators and they don't have that expertise. So, that's one of the medical devices that we need to have some means of being able to charge. And it doesn't have to be 125KW generator to do that. I mean, it's, I mean, you got an 8,000-watt generator sitting there. You could plug a whole bunch of those things in there. Like, you'd have a, you could easily plug a dozen in and just let them run. And in a matter, in hours, it would take three, four hours, you can charge one of those up and those people are good for that. And so, where I'm really headed with this, kind of this conversation is, what I would like to see our staff do is kind of what they're already doing, is working a plan to what we do on a little basis and then work on the grants. But how we do that and how we do that as a council, that's, I don't think that's a monumental thing 'cause it's out in front of us and we, and we know where we're at. And a lot of simple stuff we can do, even as citizens, that make this a tolerable thing. And to go forward, that's something your small community is gonna have to do anyway, is you've gotta start looking out for your neighbor. You're gonna have to need to find out who your neighbors are. Councilman Woodall has talked about this several times and I've seen her comment on Facebook, that, you know, you as an individual are responsible, not by law, but by the fact that you're who you are, to find out who the people around you are that are old or incapable of taking care of themselves. And find a way to make that happen, whether the city does it or how. And there's, there are some multi, there is social media that's looking out to try to do this. Marilyn Ross is one that started a Facebook page on, for Scotia-Riedel. It's, they're looking out for ways to help their community and network. And they're, and they're, they just want to do this. And so, I think, pass the word out to your friends. This is, this is what we're gonna have to do going forward as a community. And that's what makes Riedel a small community, is we need to do that. Not just depend on staff. And I appreciate everything, appreciate everything staff's done through this. They've done an outstanding job on the first one and a better job on the second one and the third one's gonna be better. All the way through the county and OES and everyone, it's gonna be better. So, that's my rant.
Thank you. So, is there direction?
What?
Oh, no, I was actually talking to Kyle, trying to decide what it is, where we're going. Provide direction.
If it's necessary.
Is there direction you need?
Up to the council.
Is there any thing we need to direct? Feeling a need?
No.
Okay. So, we are good. And we will move on to our final item, which is the introduction in first reading by title only of ordinance number 377-2019, amending chapter 15.05, construction codes. Section 15.05.020 of the Riedel Municipal Code to adopt to the 2019 California Building Codes.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. This item begins on page 19 of your packet. This is just kind of a standard item that comes up every three years to adopt the latest building codes. What we're asking the council to do is receive staff's report regarding amending these related sections, introduce the first reading of the proposed ordinance, open the public hearing, receive public comment, and then continue this consideration to the council meeting on November 19. So, there'll be really no action tonight other than to take public comment and then refer it on to the next meeting. So, the California Building Standards Commission is an independent commission within the State of Consumer Services Agency, responsible for reviewing, adopting, and publishing building standards for the state of California every three years. The CBSC adopts a compilation of building regulations referred to as the California Building Standards Code. Through the code adoption process, CBSC selects and approves a set of model codes. Inclusive, in these regulations are the California Building, Mechanical Plumbing, Electrical, Existing Buildings, Fire, Energy, Residential Building, Historical Building, and Green Building Codes. So, local governments or jurisdictions can also modify the code to add more restrictive provisions based on their specific local geologic climate or topographic conditions to protect their communities. Any local amendments to the above mandated codes must be more restrictive than the state building standards codes and must be substantiated with findings per the Health and Safety Code. The administrative provisions of the code can be modified without specific justification based on local conditions. So, the 2019 codes became effective January 1st, will, January 1st, 2020 will become effective. However, the specific code addition applicable to a building project is established by the building permit application date. Therefore, projects submitted for a permit on or after January 1st, 2020 must be, must be designed to the 2019 edition of the CBSC. So, with that, I'll return it to the council to open up the public hearing and see if there are any other comments.
Anyone on the council have, thank you, Kyle. Does anyone else on the council have any statement or question?
A comment. The, the last paragraph, full paragraph on page 20, included in this adoption of the California Standards Code is the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code. This is gonna be a big deal for the city, just to make it easier to abate hazards that are out there. In the past, it's been a frightful thing to abate a nuisance. Hopefully, this new standard will help the city do some significant cleanup. Thank you, Mayor Garance.
Thank you. And for anyone in the public who hasn't looked at this item in the packet, the basic, just for information, the change throughout the entire thing is just going from 2016 to 2019. There's no, nothing's been fiddled with, within the code. It's just bringing it up to, literally bringing it up to date for the state. Is there any public comment on this? Done.
Quick question. Page 24 to go up. There's nothing in this chapter, so it could be true, it's prohibited for any person from doing his own work or employing other persons' work. Does that include all aspects of building, electrical, plumbing, etc.?
I don't have that answer. I don't think so, but I don't, I cannot tell you that answer, absolutely.
I believe it is. I believe it's you, you can do it on your own house, not somebody else's.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can do your own work on your own house. But if somebody else, if you're doing it on another house, they have to get a permit. You get a permit on your house and do your own work. But it has to pay.
Has to be code.
It has to be inspected and you have to get a permit and you have to go by the building inspector to make sure.
But you can do it yourself.
To my understanding, if it's your house.
Anyone else comment or question? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council and we will send this off to next, November 14.
Don't we make an option to extend this?
I'm sorry?
Do we make a motion to extend this to the next meeting?
Yeah.
For a resolution in the passage?
It's a motion to continue the consideration and approval to the regularly scheduled meeting on November 19.
Mayor Garance, I would move that the council accept the first reading of ordinance 377, 2019, and have a second reading two weeks from today.
Hold on a second, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second. A vote. The vote passes 4-0. Thank you. And now, we will come to council reports and communications.
I'll bring it down, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor Garance. Tomorrow, I will be attending a California Transportation Commission meeting in Crescent City. And the focus of that is to discuss the Last Chance Grade. And I may make a presentation and I may not, but I will be there.
I don't have anything to report, but Councilwoman Woodall wanted agendized next time the Sharps thing. She wanted that looked at. I think she left something in all of our boxes.
She did. She didn't say, she didn't tell me that she wanted.
I don't know what it meant. I just know we.
She just left a thing in the.
It looked like something from another city.
It was from Fortuna and what they've done. And I think that she, she wanted that put on the agenda. So, anyway, there you go.
I don't have a problem.
We have a consensus. Put that on the agenda, please, for next meeting. I went two weeks ago to the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And we have, for the first year, a caucus for rural cities so that small rural cities have a voice at the table, an equal voice as the bigger cities, which hasn't been the case. It's just, we were another city within a bunch of bigger cities and we were never, we, we, smaller rural cities were not as well-represented as we should have been or could have been. And so, they took a year to sort out how to make it work, the connections to be made. And they, it came to fruition this past annual conference. And now, we do have a rural cities caucus that will address issues that are really important to the smaller rural communities. And we are excited about it and hopefully that will benefit us. That's, that's the hope. There were lots of, there are a lot of sessions at these meetings. And one of the biggest problems is that they run simultaneously. So, one person can't be in two or three spots. So, there was, there were quite a, there were, there were at least four sessions that, in my opinion, we could have benefited from the information. But as I said, it was only me. So, I don't know if that's something that other council members would be interested or staff in years to come. But, you know, Eureka sent five or six people, Fortuna sent three or four people. And so, the other jurisdictions send more than one person so that you can cover, cover this information because it actually is very, it's good information. There's information on how to get grants, what grants are available, different things that don't just, they aren't just obvious. And so, that was this past, the 15th through the, the 16th through the 18th of October. The league also, Councilmember Strawn had asked me some time ago what the league does or how it benefits us. But one of the things that the league was very, very involved in was the PSPS talks with elected officials, between elected officials and OES and PG&E and Southern California Edison, and San Diego Edison, so much so that OES thanked them at the end of the first couple conference calls because they did provide, they did send out the messages to the elected officials. They got the elected officials involved so that we could hear directly, that we could ask questions, that, you know, even if a constituent had a question, that they could ask us, that we could ask forward. So, it was a good, it was a good conference. And I just wanted everyone to know that the league does do, that they are a good organization that helps, helps cities more than, than cities probably actually recognize. And with that...
Mayor Garance, I move for adjournment.